...Act of the State of New Jersey, adequate notice of this work session and regular meeting of the Franklin Township Council was made as required, indicating that this meeting would take place at the municipal building at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, June 24th, 2025.
If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by invocation from Councilman Embarrasson.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Wait, you all right? Careful.
May those assembled here today enjoy the many offerings of our township. May we abide by the rules we have established, those of trust, fellowship, and ethics, and may we place service above self in our daily endeavors. And may we always test ourselves and our efforts to be sure they are the truth, good, for all concerned, of benefit to mankind, and provide peace and understanding. Amen.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Embarrasson.
Still here.
Councilwoman Francois.
Here.
Councilman Karazi.
Mayor Kramer.
Here.
Councilman Nonychaka.
Here.
Councilmember Potasnik.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Udine.
Here.
Councilman Vasanella.
Here.
Councilman Wright.
Here.
So there's no commendations or proclamations. Item number six, I've kind of shuffled the agenda a little bit. I wanted to get the energy aggregation bid results in before the public spoke so that the public can comment on it during public session if they'd like to. So, take it away.
Good evening, everybody. Nice to put real faces with names in addition to virtual pictures of everyone. My name is Lauren Altschler. I'm with Gable Associates, the energy consultant that's working with Franklin Township on your energy aggregation. And a bid was issued, an RFP, on June 2 to take bids today, June 24. It was advertised in the Home News Tribune and distributed to third-party energy suppliers, and we followed the bidding process as required by local public contract law. You have an ordinance that stipulates requirements for awarding a GEA deal 4379-22. This ordinance requires at least 10% greater than state mandated levels of RPS be procured, and the award must also provide at least 5% savings versus utility rates. Unfortunately, none of the bids that came in today met that specified criteria. Therefore, the recommendation is to make no award at this time, yet allow that your bid remain open for up to 120 days to allow the township to take refresh bids at a later date within that time period. And that would be subject to issuance of an addendum to the RFP. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Can I ask a question? Are you at liberty to disclose what was the highest savings in the proposals?
I can discuss that with the council, and I have provided some information to the council members. We typically recommend that it not be discussed in public while the bid is still open.
Okay.
So.
All right. That's what I asked you.
The bid process.
All right. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, so I'm not going to vote on the resolution now. Open to public session. Do I have unanimous consent to open for public session? Without objection, we're open for public session. We give five minutes to each person. No yielding of time, may only come up once. Please state your name and address.
And this is on any topic, right?
This is on any topic. But you have the opportunity to talk about energy aggregation as well.
Lynda Powell, 22 Buffett Drive. I want to give my thanks to the council and to Mr. Bornlocker for their submissions to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, otherwise known as FERC, and to the many hundreds of people who have intervened and submitted comments to opposition to the Northeast Supply Enhancement, or NESI project, N-E-S-E project, in a very short time that we had to comment. We learned about the health and safety hazards of these compressor stations in the years we were fighting the NESI project. The project includes plans for a proposed gas-fired gas compressor station here in Franklin and a pipeline expansion under Raritan Bay. We know of the harm to health, clean air, and clean water. We understand the impact on global climate crisis and the risk to more destructive storms, flooding, and sea level rise. When I first learned about this project, I was particularly interested in the health impacts, being a healthcare worker myself. And just to remind us about some of the health risks, I looked up some of the older literature, some of it's 10 years old now, but as Dr. Donalisey pointed out last meeting, the newer research has even brought up more issues. So exposure to air contaminants increases an individual's risk for the development or worsening of pre-existing respiratory or cardiovascular disease. In addition, some of the contaminants have adverse neurological effects, others are carcinogenic. As with other air pollution, those at increased risk include children, developing fetuses, the elderly, and individuals with chronic respiratory or cardiovascular disease. There are acute health effects from short-term exposure, which can include headache, confusion, COPD, and asthma exacerbation, dizziness, nausea, memory problems, fatigue, skin irritation, acute cardiac events, insomnia, iron-throat irritation, acute cardiac events, coughing, acute respiratory problems, and chest pains. The chronic health impacts from long-term exposure include anemia, bone cancer, lung and other respiratory cause cancers, lip and oral cancers, leukemia and lymphoma, endocrine disruption, breast and genital cancers, permanent neurological problems, bladder and urinary cancers. Then, from another source, people now have heard about particulate matter, especially with the fires from Canada coming down last year. And certain combinations of air pollutants have synergistic effects, which mean they work together with an increased effect. For example, PM 2.5, which is a small particulate matter, and carcinogens are more dangerous together because the particulate matter absorbs the pollutants and then carries them deep into the lungs. And then this was from a statement by the Southwestern Environmental Health Project's summary on compressor stations and health impacts. The combination of particles and chemicals effectively increase the dose of the chemicals. Thus, the consequences are much greater than additivity would indicate. The proposed compressor station, if ever built, will admit toxic chemicals that can cause health issues, which on summary include, but may not be limited to, cancer, childhood leukemia, birth defects, developmental delays, immunological disorders such as asthma and allergies, increased risk for heart attacks, strokes, neurological issues such as autism and Alzheimer's, lung diseases and other breathing disorders, sleep issues, kidney disease, kidney failure, and premature death. The only reason for these projects is to feed the greed of the billionaires who control the fossil fuel industry while they forever increasing profits endanger our health, our safety, and our environment. We strongly urge people to get involved once more in fighting this dangerous, unneeded project. We have won before, and we will win again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I give my name, I'm wondering if I could just do what our Assemblyman Joe Danielson does and just say, hey, you guys all know me, right? You know, he does that when he comes before microphones.
Yes, and then we make him say his name and address.
Yeah, I don't think you have done that, though. He's gotten away with not having to do that.
Okay.
Or I could just, you know, do what you do, Mayor Kramer, and just say, my address is here at this building. So, just curious. Let's start my timer. I'm not going to take the full five minutes. You know, Mayor Kramer, I know sometimes you're.
Name and address.
Rob Peterson, 66 Wilson Road. So, I'm going to hold you responsible then for holding Assemblyman Joe Danielson to that same standard, and maybe perhaps even yourself, right? You won't have to give this address.
This is the address I work at.
Yeah, it's funny, though, right? So, you know, you don't have to give your home address. You know, I have to give mine.
Okay.
Right? So, just curious.
Let's talk about this for five minutes.
Okay, I can do that. After my five minutes, we can take another five minutes. So, you've recently recused yourself from talking about warehouses. So, I'm wondering if you would just, and you're free to answer or not, I'm not going to hold you to it. I was just wondering if you would add some transparency to why you would do that. So, that's part one. Part two, along the same lines then, Mr. Potasnik. You obviously work for the League of Conservation Voters. You've worked there for a number of years. You draw a six-figure salary from that. And yet, you know, you appear at the gazebo, you know, for different events. You speak on behalf of the town, and I'm sure you're making decisions. Why are you not recusing yourself from things? And, you know, it would be polite, Mayor Kramer at least has the decency to look at me while I'm speaking, and I did address you by Mr. Potasnik. Mr. Embarrasson, so same thing for you, sir. You own seven or more businesses here in town, real estate connected? Six, five, six, I don't know. Tell us the number, please. You're sitting and doing all kinds of rulings and things, and I'm sure zoning and otherwise related. Why wouldn't you feel the need to recuse yourself from such decisions? So, again, I'm just a thorn in your sides, and I get it. And you guys are in lockstep with one another. Mr. Potasnik is still on his computer and hasn't even looked at me. So, you know, just here to provide a little transparency, a little accountability, and to ask somewhat annoying questions. Having said that, I still do respect the fact that you guys have an office and you represent people in this town. I'm sure that that's an onerous task. So, that's all I had.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Javon Walker, 15 Coon Street. I'd like to start, you can start the time. I'd just like to give a thank you, she doesn't know it, but Michelle Peterson. Last October, November, my grandfather went missing for about 72 hours. And the council and everyone else, they had like a frantic like search to find my grandfather, which you found him at probably like hour 70 or 71. And I remember Michelle on the Facebook page was like following up, asking me and doing all that stuff. I just want to give her like a huge thank you. You didn't even know me as a political candidate, but just as a resident of Franklin Township. The next thing I want to bring up was that, from an existential crisis like climate change, the environment and so forth that Linda has spoken about, another existential crisis that I want to bring to the table is housing. I'm curious to know if anyone on the council or Mr. Bornlocker, whomever, may be able to give me the details of exactly how tax sales work within Franklin Township. Who exactly are the people that are able to participate in tax sales? How is it done? From my knowledge, I believe that has to do with the bid amount and the percentage of the interest that an investor is able to collect. The reason why I'm asking is because I think another existential crisis that is already happening, not even just bound to happening, is housing. The median buying age has become 40, 41 years of age in comparison to maybe 29, 30, 31 a couple of years back. The price of housing has gotten to be so ridiculously out of bounds for the average home buyer. People can't afford it, people can't buy it, the rates aren't working, a lot of people are locked in, like myself, a lot of people are locked into like sub-4% interest rates that they're not going to sell because then they'll have to, you know, resell and get like a 7%, 8%, 6% mortgage and so forth. The reason why I bring up a tax sale is because I know that municipalities always are in need of tax dollars to be able to keep the municipality running. So, they run tax sales whenever the current homeowner has not paid their taxes for preceding years. So, the proposal that I have is, instead of, again, I don't know exactly what the stipulations are for people, for investors to participate in the tax sale process, but from what I was thinking was, is it possible that a tax sale could be just for the residents of the municipality? If you have, okay, I appreciate you shaking your head. Because what I was thinking was, if you have people that are 20-something, 30-something, 40-something, have their credentials on paper to be approved for a mortgage, and they somehow can't do it due to a libertarian or a type of, the homeowners control the home buying process, is it possible that they can put in bids for a tax sale and be at the top of the list of prioritizing in order for them to win a bid on a tax sale property? That's just my idea. I don't know exactly how it can be changed or improved, but another thing is maybe a Franklin Township First Home Buyer Program. I don't know if that's possible. I don't know if that can even be tabled by the Township Council. I just think that there are so many houses in this township that it's not impossible for a person to be able to purchase a house. Financially wise, it might be, but I think that there could be something put in place to be able to help out people that have been here, graduated from the local school system that just want to live in Franklin Township, and unfortunately, they can't afford it. Just asking if anyone wanted to give their input on it. That was it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Benjamin Guy, 35 Patton Drive. Just two things. One is, I want to applaud the students that participated in the workforce development program that the first cohort was finished, I think about two, three weeks ago. I think it was about six to seven people that actually finished the program. So, I would like to see whether or not, since the town council, and I know most of them haven't attended or actually participated, see whether or not they can get those students to come here and tell about their experience so that you know exactly what real-world experience looked like and how that could benefit for what people is. And then also, I recommend that, because it was a town council-sponsored endeavor, those type of recommendations may be put in by the town council to give them off to other jobs that they might have in the county at all, because there's a lot of public works jobs and a lot of other construction jobs that are going to come about as we go along over the next five to seven years because of infrastructure improvements that needs to be done. And I think these type of certificates and these type of recommendations where people trying to go through this stuff sort of need an extra boost to actually move this stuff along at all. So, that was one thing. Second thing is, I want to applaud the Public Works Department because in my area directly, we had a water main break that was there. And the reason why I'm bringing this up is because we're talking about infrastructure. With that being said, it's these type of opportunities and these type of jobs that we need to start backfilling as soon as possible because a lot of the people that are in these public work departments and everything else that are there, they're getting older. So, we need to get a younger workforce involved with what's going on. And it's not just locally in Franklin, but it's just in the region itself. So, using our resources to actually get these people actually opportunities and jobs would actually be a benefit to everybody that actually succession plan can actually do. So, I just want to do that recommendation. But because this happened, and I just want to bring this up because of the water main break that was actually happened, what's the town's assessment plan on what they're doing with the Public Works Department? Because the one that happened in my area specifically was surprising to the whole neighborhood, right? And I know that we're all going through infrastructure stuff that's there, but is there assessment being done on these type of things that are going on in the area to actually see whether or not this might occur again? Because if the whole infrastructure is built the same way, then this is going to keep occurring. Now, the reason why this wasn't a major concern is because it's not in a highly densely populated intersection that's there, but it is where school kids are. So, if this happened during the day, this could have been a problem. This could have been a problem where it could have been a sinkhole or anything else that was there. So, I'm just asking these type of questions to actually look at, because we had invested money from our American Rescue Plan to repair other things at all. So, I just want to make sure we're looking at these type of things as we go forward as the town council is concerned. The portion, also to comment back on Mr. Walker's comment, we have brought this up about the affordable housing portion. So, he's just one of many people that, again, we say we do a great job with affordable housing, but we can always be better. If we're going to be a leader, be a leader. A leader doesn't stop growing. It doesn't say, okay, I hit this bar and I'm happy at where I'm at. We don't have to be forced by outside entities to do the right thing. Now, if we know that we want to grow here, and we know that affordable housing is a crisis, not just in this area, but statewide, why would we not be a leader and just keep moving on what we say we have a great thing to do? Because we applaud ourselves and pat ourselves on the back all the time when we say we're doing the right thing, but we don't take the leadership and actually keep pushing the envelope to actually be the leader, continue to be the leader. And that's just a question I have for us as a whole, is that we say we applaud and we say we're the greatest, but if you're going to be the greatest, you always got to train to be the greatest, and you got to keep being the greatest. You can't stop. And I think a lot of times we've been getting content with stopping, with actually leading here. So, I'm just bringing that up altogether, altogether as far as that. And then the last two points that I want to make is that, I know we already agreed to a roadways improvement plan that was here, and I'm not sure when that's going to happen again this year, or when that's going to be rolled out, when we're going to be doing the next set of roadways. If it's going to be during the summer, I would like to see whether or not we can announce it at this meeting because at least the communication will go out to the general public. And then I also want to ask because of the reverse conversation with the State Department about a lot of stuff that's going on with the Board of Public Utilities, with what we signed on a community solar program, I would like to get an update on what we actually rolled out probably about, I think, like six months ago, about what we were doing with our community solar partners altogether, because that portion with energy aggregation is actually going to be a big thing that comes up, and because they retracted back and PSENG has to give tax credits now, we need to be looking at a different methodology of what we're doing going forward at all, and being a leader to actually take care of our citizens. That's my time for now. Thank you.
Alex Clark, 396 Hamilton Street. It was good to see some of you at the No Kings protest a couple of weekends ago. I was also happy to learn that at least a couple of you are now more supportive of ranked choice voting, especially following the Democratic primary where the winning candidate, Mikey Sherrill, received only about one-third of the vote. I went to a few protests that day. I started at Highland Park, and then I went to Piscataway, where there's a couple of council members there who favor ranked choice voting. I met with Councilwoman Laura Leibowitz in Piscataway. And then I finished the day back here at Franklin, at the Franklin Protest. And all through the day, I kept hearing from people how much they wished that we had ranked choice voting for the primary. I had 500 of these palm cards. I gave out 450 of them, which is a lot more than I was expecting. But ranked choice voting is a popular idea, especially among people who are awake and who are paying attention to what's going on. I emailed you an example of what a resolution supporting ranked choice might look like. We could adapt something similar for Franklin. And just last month, South Brunswick, our neighbors, they passed a resolution supporting ranked choice in state bill S1622 and the partner bill in the Assembly, A4042. And keep in mind that this bill lets us vote on it, so we still have to vote on it. So, nothing's changing dramatically overnight. This is something that we would have to support. Earlier this month, we had our primary election. Both New Jersey and Virginia have gubernatorial elections this year. In Virginia's Democratic primary for lieutenant governor last week, Gazala Hashmi won the election with only 27.5% of the vote. So, 27.5% was what was needed to win in that election. LeVar Stoney got 26.5%, and Aaron Rouse got 26.3%, and there were a few other candidates that split the rest of the votes. That's not a large number to win an election. You know, you have a pretty small percentage. Here in New Jersey, Mikey Sherrill won the Democratic primary for governor with about 34% of the vote. I'm sure that, from what I've seen and heard, most Democrats who didn't vote for her in the primary will be happy to vote for her in the general. I'm sure she'll do a good job as governor. But what if one day it isn't Mikey Sherrill? What if instead we have a demagogue, or a dangerous extremist, or even just someone who doesn't truly represent us, who is able to still win with maybe 34% of the vote or 27% of the vote, because they might have an energized cult following, while the rest of the vote is split across many other candidates? Our current election laws leave open a pathway for that to happen. With ranked choice voting, however, that dangerous extremist will have a much harder time winning because in order to win, you will need majority support. And most people will reject extremism. Ranked choice voting is about ensuring fair representation and strengthening our democracy. We shouldn't be complacent, and we shouldn't assume that a dangerous extremist can't win here. We should be proactive and push for ranked choice as soon as possible. I've been working with the JFK Club to set up a presentation where we can have a more in-depth discussion about how ranked choice voting works and the benefits, including increased turnout, reduced negative campaigning. But they're interested in having that presentation, they're very interested, but they do have several speakers already committed for most of the year, so that might not happen until November after the election, or even January. So, if you have any other opportunities or suggestions where we could do something like that, I would be interested. But in the meantime, I'm interested in hearing your thoughts on ranked choice, and if your feelings have changed since I last spoke on it a few months ago, especially in the aftermath of the Democratic primary. Thank you.
Beverly Lawson, 2004 Amwell Road. I would like for the minutes of the June 12 meeting to reflect the fact that I also mentioned that June was Veterans Month, and I asked would the council be doing a proclamation for the veterans? As I can see, that did not happen, so I guess the veterans will not be acknowledged for the month of June. Sorry that the council didn't think it was worthy enough for somebody to actually acknowledge the veterans, because every day in this country, approximately 17.6 veterans commit suicide every day. But they weren't worthy of acknowledgement from this council. So, from fellow veterans, we thank you for nothing. Even though we defend you, we give you your right to protest, we give you your rights to come to these meetings and speak up, but you couldn't acknowledge them. And for that, I have to say, it's a shame that this council did not acknowledge them for the month of June.
I was here two months ago to raise my issue about the Hamilton Street Advisory Board, and I was told that my address was out of the zone. I have a new community partner on Hamilton Street, Throne Temple Ministries at 656 Hamilton, and so wanted to raise my application again for consideration. All righty, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ask for unanimous consent to close public portion with no objections. Public portion is closed. So, first item of business is the resolution on energy aggregation. Resolution 25-289, government energy aggregation bid. I present Resolution 25-289 entitled, "Resolution to not award a contract to a third-party supplier to provide electric generation services to Franklin community energy aggregation participants and to provide government energy aggregation services in connection with the FCEA." Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. So, yes means no when you vote. And as we all heard, that it didn't come up to our specifications, and there's 120 days left for people to enter bids. Are there any other comments?
I would say one thing. I'm disappointed that it wasn't able to come back competitive so that we could save families across Franklin money. That's a really good thing that the council did to put this competitive bid forward. I do remain hopeful that maybe in the 120-day window, that some folks could come in and might be able to be awarded at the 5% savings and 10% more clean energy. And, you know, there's no harm in trying to save people money. That's something that folks elected us to do, to meet the needs of families with soaring energy costs related to the regional grid operators' inability to connect clean energy projects to the grid. If they had connected 30% of the clean energy projects that are waiting to queue up to five years, our electricity rates that have gone up this month, 17% from PSENG. five years, our electricity rates that have gone up this month 17% from PSENG would have been 63% lower. So you might imagine if they connected 100% of those projects, we'd actually be going down in our rates. The folks that work there work for the fossil fuel industry. They vote behind closed doors. They don't report out what they do, and they pick projects of their buddies where they're more expensive and that they can profit. And they shut down opportunities for clean energy to build a healthier community, reduce air pollution, get online faster. And it's really unfortunate that our families are saddled with that burden. But this council stood up to do something to save money. It's available, and it was approved by the Board of Public Utilities. Unfortunately, it wasn't competitive, but I think we got to stick at it with 120-day window and keep doing our work to get back to a place where we can lower those rates. So I just want to thank the council for stepping forward and, you know, trying to make this a reality. And it is disappointing that it's not, but it is the way it is. Thanks.
So I have a comment, Mayor. So this is the second time that we have been not get a vendor that we could work with.
First time.
Didn't it, last year we didn't do that?
No, we didn't go out to bid the last time, because it was such a negative marketplace for meeting the criteria.
Yeah, we didn't go for it. Okay, yeah. So one of my thinking is, is the rate may be competitive. I think my thinking is, the green energy side, the 10% goal we established, maybe it's high. I'm not sure whether it is, but looking at the bids, maybe we can analyze that. If we have to rebid this at a later time, maybe that could be fine-tuned to a lower level, maybe 5%. I don't know, but I think that's something that we need to think about.
But the referendum.
Past referendum with specific guidelines. We can't just change like that. We'd have to go back to some kind of ordinance or referendum, but the attorney, I'm sure, would inform us as to the process. But I thought we set that as a threshold that was like the minimum we wanted to meet.
Right. So from what I know, PGNG and all the other providers having a tough time because of the PJM issue, they're unable to meet the green energy, the clean energy goals as a state. So I think we may have to relook at that number.
But the petitioners specifically wanted it for green energy. That's how the whole thing started. And they were, at one point, annoyed that we added savings to it. So I understand what you're saying, practicality, but you're kind of turning upside down the intention of the whole thing. But I do agree we should analyze the bids and at least know, make some decisions, or understand anyway what's going on. Any other comments? Madam Clerk? So yes means no.
Councilman Embarrasson?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Onichaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Potasnik?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Vardine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Okay. It isn't on the printed schedule, but now it's time for a council to respond to comments. Do them in order. Do you want to respond to Nessie? Mr. Potasnik?
Well, I'll just say, you know, thank you, Linda Powell, for your tremendous leadership, and many folks in town have been very active, Kirk Frost, Barbara Cuthbert, I'm going to forget folks if I start listing them. But we had an information session last week over at the Board Administrative Complex, otherwise known as formerly Consulata Missions. And Patty Kronheim from Rethink Energy was there, as well as Michelle Langa from the New York, New Jersey Baykeeper. And they outlined a lot of background information about the zombie project that Williams Transco is bringing back. Suffice it to say, this pipeline company, which is a multi-billion dollar company, withdrew the application previously, which was three times denied because it didn't meet the strict water quality and air quality standards to protect our public health. They donated tens of thousands of dollars to President Donald Trump, well, now president again, and now through his fake, you know, executive order emergency, energy emergency, or starting to ramrod this through, including the Buddhist Bahara Temple, the largest Buddha in America, schools, and homeowners that are going to be negatively impacted. And the Township Council unanimously supported a resolution opposing the project for numerous reasons. And I want to thank Township Manager Bob Vornlocker for his quick efforts to, you know, relight up the website so folks could navigate the very complex federal process to put yourself in as an intervener, which retains your legal ability to sort of appeal any decisions by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. And then thousands of comments went in as well from concerned citizens and environmental groups. And then we also had the rally last week. So, you know, I think, Linda, the comments that you're making are very similar to the views of the board. This compressor station would be closer to my house, 216,000 horsepower engines, 32,000 horsepower, constantly running 24 hours a day, not monitored onsite. The mayor did some quick math. It's 7,100 homes in Franklin, a third of our homes. That's not even including winter season. That would just be their winter season emissions, full year, all in one spot. And it's on an active quarry, and they're jet engines, and that technology's never been tested. All the comments that folks have made previously, Transco ignored. And in fact, in a meeting that they had with township representatives, they didn't even update the cost of the project. They're still using old numbers, and they scoffed at the numbers and said, oh, yeah, we're never going to build it for that. And here's the amazing things folks should know. They're going to make 14% on whatever the number is of the cost. They're guaranteed profit. For them, they don't do this at a no cost. Not only do they make money on the gas they transmit, they make money on the construction, and that's why they want to build it. And the New York ratepayers would pay, and we would be polluted. So, you know, thank you to the council. Thank you, Linda, and others in town for their leadership. You know, we're going to continue to fight this in every avenue that we have. So I probably said too much, but it's nothing different than we've said previously. Just length of time too much.
So Mr. Peterson, I use the address 475 Demont Lane. When I'm there, speaking as mayor, it emphasizes that that's why I'm there, speaking as mayor. When I speak for myself, I use my home address. It's as simple as that. As far as your comments about me recusing myself, you're wrong, wrong in two counts. I didn't recuse myself from all warehouses. I recused myself from B9, and I went through explicit detail as to why I did that already. I'm not going to waste council time repeating it. You can go look at the video and see that I explained exactly why. I'll leave till your time. You can cover tax sales. Workforce development, that's great. Thank you for acknowledging council's efforts there. That was good work by all of us to allow that program to happen. I'll let you, Mr. Vornlocker, talk about DPW, cess jobs, and the assessment of the Affordable housing, we're going to hear, we're going to have a little presentation on affordable housing. And I'm not sure why you don't think that we're taking a leadership role in this. We are, and you're going to hear that we have more than we're supposed, than we're required to have, and we're still looking for additional housing. So made some assumptions there I don't agree with. Ranked choice voting. My comment is, which I told you at the protest, this Democratic gubernatorial primary convinced me of the importance of ranked choice voting. A little worried, a lot of people called me the night before the election and said, who do I vote for? Who are all these people? So it's enough, it's hard to grab on to the idea of, one, what are there, 11 people running for mayor in New York? So, yeah, so, but nevertheless, I am now a fan of ranked choice voting. June's Veterans Day. Who wants to take that? Do you want to, or should I?
Well, you're the veteran.
You're the veteran.
That's a good point. June is not Veterans Month. It is, there's a group of people, many people, who want it to be, but it is not Veterans Month. It is an attempt by people to overshadow and replace Pride Month. And you should be ashamed for not doing the research to look for that. Excuse me, excuse me. No, this is not your opportunity to talk. Google, Google what month? Ma'am, you're being disruptive. You spoke, you spoke, and I said nothing. Now I'm speaking. Google what month is Veterans Month? And it's November. There is no official month, there's no official site that says, government site, that says June is Veterans Month. And it's disgraceful the way you presented it, and you should be ashamed.
Mr. Mayor, can I just add something to this?
Mr. Vornlocker, go ahead.
So what I'd like to add, sir, please sit down, because I'd like to speak. So I have the benefit of waking up very early in the morning. And one of the first things that I do at 5:00 in the morning is I read Mr. Bowman's Franklin Reporter and Advocate, and I saw an op-ed piece this morning. And I was present in the meeting last month when I got to listen to you talk about Veterans Month in June. And so I saw the op-ed piece this morning, so I chose to go to my computer and begin to research Veterans Month. And I found a number of different things, and I made some notes to myself, so I'm going to go to my notes. So it's an interesting thing. Write this name down if you'd like, or listen to the tape. Charlotte Climer, C-L-Y-M-E-R. She has a blog, charlotteclimer.com. I suggest you read it, because she talks about this very issue, and how she is a proudly gay veteran, and that the number of days honoring veterans throughout the course of the year far exceeds any other topic in this country. All right? Read that blog, but then also do your research about what is declared as Veterans Month. Veterans Month, veterans and their families are honored by presidential proclamation and have been so since, actually, the first term of President Trump. It was previously Military Families Month, and he altered it in his proclamation to Veterans and Military Families Month for the month of November. He declared it by proclamation in every year of his first term of presidency, and President Biden also declared it as Veterans and Military Families Month in November for his four years of his term. All right? No one else had done it before, but those two presidents have. In fact, for this month of June, President Trump did not issue a proclamation for Veterans Month, because the Congress and no president has ever declared June as President's Month. However, there is a groundswell of support on social media and Reddit and change.org to supplant Pride Month with Veterans Month. So please, do your research before you make statements. I did my research after you made your statements and found no credible source for Veterans Month in June. If you can provide one, I'd love to hear it, because I researched it from 5:00 this morning until I got in to go take a shower at 7:30 to come to work to start my day. So in those two and a half hours, I couldn't find one source anywhere that named June as Veterans Month, other than social media claims that it should replace Pride Month. That's what I found.
And I would just say that, you know, actions speak sort of louder than words, too, because, Ms. Lawson, when you came forward and addressed the council, you didn't recognize Pride Month. You sort of papered over it. And then in addition, I think that, you know, the current president has a little problem with truth as well, so it's not surprising to me that, you know, you all would sort of just rubber stamp the sort of misinformation. You know, as someone who was really proud of the Pride event that we did, and the communities that came out, including churches and hospitals, community-based organizations, you know, to really reaffirm Franklin as a welcoming and inclusive community, I think that was a really nice show of support. And, you know, I just invite the Republican Party to be part of that once again. I did do that, Ms. Peterson is aware, in the future. And I think actions can show the way forward about how people can be more respectful and have more positive dialogues. And I think your actions tonight, as well as the last meeting, demonstrate, you know, a polar opposite contrast to that.
Okay, I guess.
Can I do taxes?
Yep.
Can I address affordable housing when he's done?
You can go do affordable housing. That's fine. I could wait.
I just want to reference, I heard some interesting comments. We do have, I'm not taking credit for it, but I always want to help bring it about. We do have a first-time homebuyers program. And simply put, we have a housing trust fund. It's not restricted to only Franklin residents. I believe it's illegal for anything relevant to affordable housing or Affordable Housing Trust Fund to have those kind of residency restrictions. However, most often are promoted and talked about locally, so most often local people do kind of get the jump on that. But we give, I think it might be up to 30,000. I don't want to say free money, but it's a grant, if I categorize and act properly, that's forgiven in time. But basically, and nowadays, moderate or low income is not all that low or moderate. You know, that you don't, a lot of people qualify. You have to go through the paperwork, but you get that homebuyer's assistance for first-time homebuyers for exactly, I think, the type of people that you were addressing want to buy a home but can't afford to. So we have a program, like many, I'm not going to go through them all, but since you brought up the first-time homebuyers, but I will echo what the mayor said. I don't know why anybody thinks we gave up or not leading or resting on our laurels, because I know a lot of us, including myself, put in a lot of time relevant to keeping an eye on anything out of the box or anything that we can get assertive with, new ideas with affordable housing. So I don't know where the rumor that we just are not dealing with that. But housing is a debacle, whether it's affordable. Buying, renting, it's a nightmare. There's a lot of components, but we are doing affordable housing. The one other thing that was brought up I wanted to mention, the gentleman here, I think he, oh, he's in the back, I can't see him. Well, first of all, Councilwoman Francois couldn't be here tonight, but I had talked to her, and I didn't want to put on the agenda for tonight, but I have a basic plan based on input from her, where we're going to expand the membership to more. And the manager gave some good ideas after that time you were here last and we talked about it. Basically, we're going to expand the membership if the council agrees to the proposal. But in the meanwhile, if you're affiliated with a group that has the address in the zone, I can guarantee you'll be appointed, but if you resubmit with the corrected address, and then we get it as a qualifying person representing an organization within the zone, if we choose that we could, I believe there's an opening, we can appoint you. So either way, thanks for coming back, and either way, we'll hope to get you on the board along with some other new faces and people to get involved. That's it, Mayor.
Mayor? Yeah, I just wanted to respond to an accusation that was made against me. So first of all, I wasn't aware of all the number of properties that I own, apparently in this township, so I would like to know those addresses myself. Beyond that, I don't know whether Rob has attended planning board meetings. Wherever there was a conflict, I have recused myself. You can go back and look at all those meetings, when that happened, actually. Beyond that, I'm not sure what to make of the accusation you made. We are required, as an elected official.
Statement.
Well, your chance is over.
What don't you understand about the rules? You spoke, we were quiet, so please be quiet. Thank you.
So in further, as elected officials, we are required to report what all could be financial interest within town every year. Our clerk administers that, and we all file those reports. And you are welcome to look at them. You can Oprah, and you will get them. So I would suggest that when you come next time to make public statements about elected officials, please be truthful, do your research and be truthful. Do not unnecessarily spread rumors which are false. Thank you.
Mr. Wright.
Just small comment there. On that housing, Councilman Vasanella brought up, he mentioned our Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Well, that Affordable Housing Trust Fund has been used a couple of times when developers have built houses, apartment buildings, they come and they ask for money from us to offset the cost of actually building that unit. So that's when they come in and we've given money away and said, hey, this is how much that apartment costs. Well, this is what we're going to give you for how many apartments you actually do build there that you want us to subsidize. And you have to keep it that way 30 years?
Thirty, and until the township releases it, so maybe more than 30 years.
Okay. So as you can see, there's the law of it. And also, if you want to buy a house, and I've directed a couple of people to this one particular website, and it's put on by Somerset County, Essential Jersey Housing Resource Center. And they have a guide, and they do one-on-one with you to either do a rental, do a purchase, and/or a senior guide to housing. Now, I pull out that purchase guide because they tell you how to keep the money together, with your credit, so that when you walk to the bank, you have the knowledge of what is required to buy that particular house. And go to that website, you'll see everything there. It's under Somerset County, and that's all I can say about that right quick. Which is not council comments, is it?
No.
No. Okay. That knocks that one down, and as again, Councilman Vasanella has done a yeoman's job on it, but I just want to make some corrections there about what it is we do with that Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Mr. Vornlocke.
Thank you. Okay, so I'll start with the low-hanging fruit. If you know someone who's interested in working in Public Works, by all means, direct them to the website where jobs are always posted, and in fact, there's a labor position and a mechanic position and a part-time custodian right now. They're always there, and I would say that the workforce in our Public Works Department is hardly ready for the old folks home. We have quite a number of young people that work for us, and they will continue to work for us. In fact, I think, you know, I'm being given a look by another member of the audience here, I believe her son works for us. And so I would say that there are young people in our Public Works Department. As far as spending money on infrastructure, you mentioned the American Rescue Plan, and I think you're aware of that. The bulk of our American Rescue Plan funds were used to fund public works projects both within our water utility and our sewer authority here in the township, which was one of the encouraged uses for municipalities like ours. Our water utility continues to budget significant amount of money for main replacements annually, well over the million-dollar mark annually for main replacement. I believe we have $2 million earmarked for this year in main replacement and infrastructure improvements. So I think that that kind of covers our efforts as far as our infrastructure with utilities is concerned.
I would just add, there will be more leaks. That's the nature of a water system.
Absolutely. Mr. Guy, you live in a development that was built by Levitt in the 1960s. You have cast iron water pipes in your neighborhoods, and all of them are earmarked. The water utility is required by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection to file a maintenance plan that's actually a 50-year plan. Obviously, it would be long beyond most of us here being involved in that process. However, that process is a mandate by the state of New Jersey, and our plan is kept current. So that's what we do as far as the water utility is concerned. Sewerage Authority falls under the directors of the Sewerage Authority, not the township. So I won't talk to them.
Mr. Vornlocke?
Yes.
And I hate to interrupt. I really hate to interrupt.
Go ahead.
But that was part of what I said two weeks ago about our water being replaced along with our sewer pipes.
Correct.
And most of it belongs where? In my backyard, because I have the oldest part of Franklin Township.
Yep.
So it's in my backyard that we're doing all this great work replacement.
Yeah, I think you raised a number of the different projects. As far as street projects, Mr. Guy, again, I would direct anyone to the website, and I would encourage people who live in this town or who do business in this town, work here, to sign up for notifications from the website, because all of that work goes out automatically from the website if you sign up for notifications. If you're not signed up for notifications, you won't get them. But on the Public Works page, all of our paving projects are listed in the projects and the status of those projects, whether they be out to bid, the bids awarded, or whether they're completed or they're in progress. So I would direct you to the Public Works website, and I would direct you to the website in general to sign up for notifications from the website. All right, now tax sales. So tax sales are not where we actually sell the property. When someone doesn't pay their taxes, or they don't pay their water bills, or they don't pay their sewer bills, there's what we refer to it as a tax sale, in which anyone who is interested in signing up to participate, and we do ours and we have done for the last several years online in October, anyone who is interested in bidding may bid. And what you're bidding on is the total cost plus interest and penalties due for whatever it is, right? So if it's, let's just say it's taxes. So you will then be required to pay with certified funds the total amount that was due at the date of the sale. And what you're bidding is a percentage. And in New Jersey, that percentage of interest that you will collect starts at 18% and you bid down. And once you bid down and you are the low bid on percentage, then the tax certificate is awarded to you once you pay the amount in arrears. And after a defined period of time, if the person who was to pay that tax or water bill or sewer bill does not redeem the lien, then the lien holder or certificate holder has the right to bring a foreclosure action. Recently, over the last couple of years, some laws have changed regarding that process due to a United States Supreme Court ruling about, and it's specifically about notification to the owner. And then you can certainly bring a foreclosure action. But there's nothing that conveys the property to any one person other than that foreclosure action. So it wouldn't be anything that could be done. And that process that I just described is not our municipal process, that's state law. And state law dictates everything related to a tax sale, not municipal ordinance. So the idea of trying to limit that to someone who lives in Franklin Township would not be permitted by state law. Okay? You're welcome. I think that was all for me, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks. I think so. Okay. Time for council comments. Start with Mr. Roni Jakka.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mayor. I just noticed that that building that is on, that's building 200 on Corleone, building 200, that building that is in a debilitated condition has been cleared.
At 200, at 200 Corleone?
Yes.
So the state may have gone in and done some maintenance work on the property, but...
Okay.
Yeah. I haven't been down South Middle Bush Road in a week or two, so I don't know, but...
They did mow the lawn.
They mowed the lawn and cleaned up the exterior of the property.
Yes. They mowed the lawn and they cleared everything because the neighbors around that, they sent me a couple of emails.
Mm-hmm. Because I think she sent all of us a couple of emails.
Yes, yes. So I'm very happy that that area has been cleared.
Good.
And we still need to monitor that area because...
Oh, it's, the police department is well aware of the issues going on there.
Okay.
As well as the issues on Whitehall where several overweight vehicles were issued notices.
Yes, yes, yes. Yes, I found that that area has been cleared too.
Yep.
Thank you for all this. Mayor, that's what I have for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Rembaris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's only one report I wanted to make about planning board. Last week, we met and approved the trails commission committees expansion plan. I think they're proposing a number of improvements in their plan, and that was good to hear. I think Tanya did a great job, manager. And then the affordable housing plan got approved, and I believe Vince is going to give us an update on that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Vasanella.
Yeah, because of the meeting tonight, health board meeting, for those who weren't here, we didn't have a public safety meeting. We will have, and we didn't have a public works month, a meeting last month, so we'll be having those meetings in the upcoming months and report out, including the status of paving and other projects, which many will be very active come the next month or two. Fireworks happening July 3rd, and please come out to it. I believe, I don't know if our cooling center is open, but we do provide emergency shelter and a manager can jump in at some point. But obviously, be careful, and if you see anybody who looks like they need assistance, I know people hesitate to talk to strangers, but if you think someone is in need with this weather, please consider inquiring. That's Elliot, Mayor. The other things I think were covered and discussed with the addressing the public's comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Petasnik.
Thank you. So a big meeting coming up for folks in the Grigstown area, probably likely Kingston area of Franklin Township in Ward 1, which is the Grigstown Causeway Route 632 Concept Development Study, and that's going to happen on Tuesday, July 1st. Doors open at 6:30 at the county official executive building with a 7:00 presentation. They're going to look at the Grigstown Causeway and a traffic study that was done there, the intersection of the Grigstown Causeway and Canal Road, and then Canal Road and Bunker Hill. I think it's very important that folks that are impacted or use that area go to the presentation, and there'll be an opportunity for experts that did the work, as well as county engineers, to answer questions from the public and, I guess, receive feedback as well. So I'm going to try to get more of the word out there so residents are aware and are not taken off guard. Ultimately, those are county roads, and any decisions related to them are up to the county. I plan on attending. It's one day before my birthday, my birthday's the next day, so I planned that day, but this day I'm available. And, you know, hear what the traffic study shows and what improvements, if any, they'll be recommending for the road intersections. That's it.
Mr. Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things to report on my committees. We had a recreation advisory meeting, and what we did is we went out to Middle Bush Park, and we walked around the park looking for deficiencies, not the things that were already great, but we looked for things that were wrong so that we could report back to Mr. Vornlocke through our open space committee and have those changes fixed. Now, one of the changes we looked at was our skate rink and skate park. And everyone complained about the fence, but we needed the fence locked to keep everybody out, because you just can't go in and skate anytime you want. So, but we came up with some ideas, and the big guy will figure this out for us. The Housing Authority, the Housing Authority, and I'll tell you what I wrote down. The inspections were good, and we passed all of our buildings past the inspections put on by the state. New Brunswick is what we share management with. Their executive director, we split between the two, and the buildings management is our PM. And we're keeping everything on an even keel. Nothing's wrong, pests, animals, there's none of that going on. And they like being where they are because right outside the back door is Niemman Williams Park. So that's a good thing to do. As far as our redevelopment agency, let me get that down. Our redevelopment agency, we haven't had a meeting in the last two months, but the agency has continued to work with our PM on the next phase of developments, which will include affordable housing. Now, our executive director is Mark Healy, our planning director, and because he's planning director, he wears many hats, and one of them is that he takes care of our redevelopment agency, planning that's coming up in the future and that we have right now. So that's a good thing that we have, and he's on point. What else did I have? I think that's it. Yes, Mr. Mayor, I think that's it.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Udine.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So just a few things, just wanted to point out. Thank you, Linda, for spare hearing and the team, the Nessie Presser Rally. I was there, and it was a great event, and a lot of diverse committee members were there. I think it was very clear that we don't want this here in Franklin, and I think we will continue to march towards that. So thank you for informing us on every council meeting almost from now on. Thank you again. As a citizen, I was part of the new No Kings Rally event that happened as well. And once again, you know, rain, I know it poured very heavy rain. Thank you to Councilmember Petasnik for keeping us all very motivated and encouraged us to keep our spirits high. I think that worked very well, so thank you. We just had the Health Board and Advisory Board of Health do a presentation, and as I was hearing about the presentations, it made me think about what we had done in 2023 as part of our health study that our staff had done an assessment in our community for all the wards. And I'm waiting to receive the presentation back to see if I can look into the data and see how it impacts some of the Ward 2 specifically as it relates to some of the top five health concerns that was issued out. So going to try to go back to our old study that's still very relevant to today and compare it against what was mentioned by the county as well as Advisory Board of Health, and see if I can find some common themes and how we're resolving. I can tell you, like, I just looked at one of the things, I know it says like top 10 things, and number three was mental health services needs to be prioritized. I think we all know that has kicked off. We do have a community, and it's been going strong. Another thing that was mentioned was low, free or low-cost preventative screenings and medical attention. I think we have also worked with a couple, like Zofol for the Board of Ed for the school. So a lot of this, I think, we have worked on from '23. So this survey was done in '23, and we're now in '25. So I just want to see what we have done to improve and where we still need to continue to look at. So just wanted to point that out. And also, congratulations to all the 2025 graduates that graduated this year. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you for my comments. I want to thank Linda Powell for coming and speaking about Nessie. And Pre, thank you for all you're going to do to help us defeat that project. That's all I have. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also like to thank Linda and the task force. So, you know, they always thank me, right? They're always saying, oh, Bob Vornlocke did this and Bob Vornlocke did that. My job is very easy in this process. My job is very easy in this process. They provide me with all of the information, and it's kind of voluminous, and all I have to do is go on the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission website and keep uploading the documents as the intervenor on behalf of the township. So really, all of the hard work is theirs, and I'm just the last, like, kind of step in the process. So I always kind of get a chuckle when they say, oh, thank you, Bob Vornlocker. I mean, you know, so I have a job here, right, the township manager, and they feed me all the information to upload. So it's really not such a bad gig that I have as far as that effort is concerned. So thank you and the task force for that. As far as the one thing I have to report, because we've already heard about fireworks and a Grigstown study, which I had queued up on my computer, um, is the Franklin Township Summer Gazebo Concert Series is back. The first concert at the gazebo is Saturday, June 28th, that's this Saturday, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. It is full-blown, which is a 70s band kickoff the summer with an explosive night of high-energy 70s tunes. There will be another one on Friday, July 18th. That's high in the mid 80s. Guess I'm thinking it's 80s music if I had to guess. And then random acts of soul. I'm thinking it's probably R&B and soul music. So what do you think? That one is on August 15th from 7:00 to 9:00, um, as it gets dark later, I guess we move to later hours in August. So, but anyway, bring your, bring your chair, free concerts sponsored by Cultural Arts Council and the Recreation Department, um, good entertainment and a nice cheap date night if you want to take your wife or husband out. There you go. And they say bring your dancing shoes. That's not my thing, so I probably won't have my dancing shoes on. But I think that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I have, what, I just got a text from HRC. Chairman Rosenthal that they have a monthly meeting tomorrow, and the presenter will be the Director of Communication, Isabel Nunez, from Assemblyman Daniels' office. Thank you.
And also, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Crozey did ask me to mention that he had a family issue that he had to deal with, and, and he's out of town, and that's why he's not here tonight.
Cooling centers, Mayor? I just.
Cooling centers or the library, their information is on the website, but library Monday through Thursday, 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., uh, the Friday hours of the library, Monday through Friday at the senior center. And if you are in need of, if you were having an emergency and are in need of assistance, I, I sound like a broken record here, but our police department is the 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week, 365-day-a-years place where you contact when something is wrong, no matter what that might be, and their lobby is air-conditioned at 2:00 in the morning if that's what you need.
Thank you. All right, on to item number 10, approval of the minutes. I present the following minutes to Township Council for their approval.
I forgot to mention, starting in July, we're doing voter registration, um, at our new complexes. So I just want to make people aware that we'll be out there doing voter registration.
Okay. Council comments are over. Approve of the minutes. I present the following minutes to Township Council for their approval. Franklin Township Works Session Regular Meeting, June 12th. Do we have a motion on the minutes?
So moved.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Anyone like to make a correction? I will. Add that Ms. Lawson stated, let her own that. Any other, uh, edits? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Brembarson.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Chaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Petasnik.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Yes.
Time to pay the bills. Warrants in the amount of $2,031,125.87 on June 24th, 2025 are presented to Township Council for payment. Do we have a motion on the warrants?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Anyone like to pull an item or discuss an item? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Brembarson.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Chaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Petasnik.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Yes.
Item number 12, public hearing and adoption of ordinances on second reading. First reading is when we announce to the world that we may be passing an ordinance. Second reading is when we actually consider the ordinance, and the public has the opportunity to speak. So ordinance 4469-25, an ordinance amending municipal code of Township Franklin County, Somerset, State of New Jersey, more particularly Chapter 384, Water Section 8, 384-1, Terms Defined, 384-12, Quarterly Consumption Charges, 384-38, Accessibility for Meters and Inspections, is presented to Township Council for public hearing and final adoption. The public hearing has been noticed as required. Do we have a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved in second. If all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, nay. Motion is carried. We're open to the public on this item only.
Seeing no one come forward, I move we close public comment at this time.
So moved.
Moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, nay. Motion is carried. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Moved in second. I'm not going to go through the long talk about how the rates are changing, but the rates are changing so that we can afford to keep our water system working. Any other comments? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Brembarson.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Chaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Petasnik.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Yes.
It passes. Orderance 4470-25, an ordinance amending municipal code of Township Franklin County, Somerset, State of New Jersey, more particularly Chapter 115, Dogs and Other Animals, Article 3, Animal Control Section Fees. Do we have a motion to open to public session?
So moved.
Moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, nay. Motion is carried. We're open to the public on this item only.
Mayor, seeing no one come forward, I motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Seconded.
Moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, nay. Motion is carried. Public session is closed. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Seconded.
Then seconded. Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Brembarson.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Chaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Petasnik.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Yes.
Consent agendas, items A through S. I'm sorry, ordinance on first reading, there are none. Consent agenda, items A through S, is listed on the consent agenda portion of the meeting, are presented to Township Council for adoption. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
So for discussion, I am hoping Mr. Dominic can inform us about, um, item number R, endorsing the fourth round housing element and fair share plan.
Just the residential.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Vince Dominakum, uh, as you all know, I'm the Township's Economic Development Director. Last March in 2024, the state legislator and the governor signed amendment to the Fair Housing Act, and I think anyone who's been involved in affordable housing, as most of us have for years, understands that it was monumental legislation. The quagmire and the chaos that has ensued for the last 15 or 20 years after COA was disbanded, this legislation, most of the people who are involved in affordable housing believe it's done a wonderful job in making it much easier and quicker and easier understandable. As part of the process, what the Township Council did is they had an ad hoc committee, four members of council, four members of the planning board, in addition to the regular standing land use committee, and during the last six months, we've met on numerous occasions to go over the ideas, the concepts of where the township wanted to go forward in regard to its fourth round housing need. As a result of that, we hired a consultant who prepared the plan in conjunction with the committees and staff. Last week, the planning board adopted the fair share plan, and what you're here for tonight is to endorse that plan as, as well as endorsing the spending plan and the four draft ordinances that go along with that. As part of what we have to do, and our township attorney can speak more in this, the, there's something called the program, which goes to, in our case, retired Judge Miller, and he's the head of the program, and our Township Attorney's Office sent the, the fair share plan to the program yesterday, and our Township Attorney's Office will send what you do tonight to them, and then we'll follow the, the process that goes through that with people, the idea they can object, and we go through it adopting ordinances. It's very, very important to note that this is the fourth round, and as we had one comment here before about how we do an affordable housing, this township in the first three rounds was not only fully compliant, but did more than we were required to do. In our last round, where we had over 2,000 units, we built over 95% of them. There is no other municipality in the state that came close to building that actual amount of units. A lot of times what you do is you zone and you hope for them. We actually, we built those units. In addition, and I'll talk about that in a few minutes, about the numbers in the plan, the, the two committees of council were, were very adamant that the initial plan that we're doing here to satisfy the requirements doesn't stop here, because the idea is that we need to get a plan to get a certain number to satisfy the state law. But the council made it very clear to staff and our consultant that we're supposed to be looking for other projects during the term of the fourth round. There are, there are really two numbers that we're concerned with tonight. The first number is the, the present need, which is 268. That's the number that we have to address versus doing rehab, and we have CDBG grant funds and our Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We've had a housing program here for decades, and we have a housing coordinator, a member of staff, who every year we go out and we help people, low and moderate income rehabilitate those homes, and then, of course, there's a lien put on the home until they, until they sell it later on. The other more important number that we have is the prospective need, which is 659. That's the need during the next 10-year pro, 10 years that we have to address by building new homes. The plan that you have in front of you talks about those numbers, and there's 300 pages of, of appendices. Really, the most important thing to understand is that the 659 is being met by four projects. We have a project at 260 Davidson, which is an old hotel. They're going to renovate those rooms and turn them into apartments. We have, we're tearing down, well, the developer will be tearing down 347 Elizabeth and building apartment buildings. 606 to 610 Franklin Boulevard, the planning board just several weeks ago declared that in an area in need of rehabilitation. So that will be torn down, and there'll be some type of affordable housing. The plan is to do senior affordable housing. The other last one is 315 Davidson. That's a B1 zone, which most likely, as we all know, if someone would propose a warehouse, and instead of doing that, we're going to build affordable housing. So tonight, what we're asking you to do is to endorse the plan and send it, send it to the program. The, probably the most important thing to understand in what this council and what the two committees did along with staff is that typically a set aside in affordable housing is 20%. So you build 1,000 units, you get 200 units of affordable. That's kind of the typical throughout the state. The most important numbers for everyone to understand tonight, we're building 722 units, and out of, out of that, that's 68% of our total units that we're building are going to be affordable. If we did the normal set aside of 20%, that would be almost 2,500 units. So what the township, especially with the council's guidance, was able to do was to build and satisfy our affordable housing need, but at the same time, not build all the other homes that go with the increase of taxes. So the bottom line is, we ask you tonight to endorse the resolution and send the resolution and the, uh, the spending plan and the ordinances to the program.
Thank you. Thank you. I won't ask you for specifics, but do you have other properties already in mind to add to this?
We, we, we have talked to numerous developers, because remember, we had a certain time period to get it, and, you know, developers after we were point of no return have talked to us, so there are, there are other properties and other developers who are interested. And the important thing is because we've, will have already met our need, we can pick and choose. We're not going to be able to say, oh, my God, we have to take Kingston and put it in our sewer service area and build 2,000 homes next to homes that are on six acres. We won't have to do that. The council will be able to choose the best projects that they want to do because of your forethought in the planning that you've done in the last 20 or 30 years.
And that's one of the advantages that, uh, came about by taking the original 721 and reducing that by correcting the mistakes the state had made. We have a lower number that we have to meet, and that gives us the flexibility for the numbers that we're going to go beyond what we have to meet.
That is great.
Anyone else?
So, so the idea is there's still, and I think I know some of them, and you might have some other ideas, projects, that we can entertain, that we don't have to change zoning or have high density or give away to farm. We could have 50% affordable and 50% market. We could have a piece of property the town owns on. You find the right person. We develop it. We work out what we give them, what we don't. So we not only have met and exceeded the number we're, like we did last round, that we're obligated to, we still have projects that we can be more, quote, "in the driver's seat" and concentrate on building all or mostly affordable housing units as opposed to building out higher rent, higher rate purchase or rent properties.
Like, like I said, the council's made it crystal clear to the township manager, and the manager made it clear to staff, is that you want us to build the most amount of affordable housing to address, but everyone knows there's a housing crisis. But because we've been able to satisfy the plan, in fact, go over it, now, like I said before, we're in, like you said, we're in the driver's seat. We don't have to rezone something to a ridiculous density. We can take a look at the different projects, and you can choose which ones you think are best for the community.
Fantastic. Thank you. Anyone else?
Just wanted to say, great job, Vince, Mark. Staff did a fantastic job putting the whole thing together. Took a lot of time and efforts and talking to many developers. I think credit goes to the entire team.
I just want to say also thank you, but is there, are we looking at specific timelines that we can mention, or is that still?
It's a 10, it's a 10-year plan. My guess is that these first projects will go relatively quickly because unlike some municipalities that I, we talked about that just zone them, each one of these is either owned or contract purchaser. In fact, three of the four are owned by the developer, so we don't have to wait for that. The township will be in charge of one of them because it's a redevelopment area. That will probably take a little bit longer only because you'll have the flexibility to decide what you want and how you may want to change it, because some of these projects may change a little bit depending on construction costs and everything else and how the economy goes. But the, the first three, my expectation will go very quick, and we'll be doing, you'll be seeing, we have draft ordinances in the coming months, once we get through some of the process. You'll be seeing the draft ordinance, the draft ordinances before you to change the zoning so that they can start control. I can tell you, two of them are chomping at the bit to start, and if we pass the ordinance tonight, they would start immediately.
The, 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 the ones that he's talking about, obviously, developers only make money by developing, right? So even if it's an existing building that they're going to either convert or raise and build new, that they, they have, their motivation is to get their shovels in the ground and get their development completed so that they can begin to collect the rent or whatever it is. So, yeah, that's one of the reasons why the properties that we, we've included in this plan are, are, they're viable, they're ready, you know, they're ready to go once all of these things are approved. Bless.
Thank you, Vince, and, and Mark, and the team. I think you guys did a great job on working out the.
Thank you, Vince, and Mark, and the folks on the committee that looked at all the different projects. You know, I think Franklin has been a leader in affordable housing, and I want to point to an article that our very own mayor was made famous, or more famous, in.
More famous.
It was more famous. It was a Gothamist article, and it's a nonprofit newsroom powered by WNYC. It was Karen Yee who did it. And the title of the article from 2023 is Why These New Jersey Schools Are So Diverse. While Many Are Segregated, Affordable Housing Has Been Key. And Franklin was lifted up as embracing affordable housing, which has encouraged our community to be not only diverse, but also welcoming. And it's something, you know, from my time on the school board, when people were asked the number-one quality of the schools that they appreciated, it was the diversity every single time, and then many other things on the list. And that's because this council hasn't shied away from its obligations to provide seniors with a place to live that they can afford to live in, and new graduates, young professionals. And this is just another step in that direction. And, you know, it's a fast timeline, but I think some really creative thinking with willing developers. And, you know, I think congratulations, and, you know, more to come, I think, in some scenarios. But like, continuing to lead when you're already leading is hard. It's easy to get tired and fall behind, and Franklin's not doing that. We're staying right with good stamina at the front of the pack. So congratulations.
Mr. Mayor, I'll just say one more thing. When we got approval from the courts for the third round, both the presiding judge at the time, which was Judge Miller, believe it or not, the same judge we're sending you now, and Fair Share Housing, which is the group that advocates for Fair Share, for affordable housing, that's the one who typically objects the plans. Both of them, after our plan was approved, got up and said they wish every other municipality acted like us and called us the shining star in the state. And I believe that's because, that's what the council has demanded of staff to do that, because you know how important affordable housing is, especially in Franklin Township.
And I'd like to add that I don't think a week goes by that I don't get an email as mayor at 475 Demont Lane that, that, that join the mayors who are fighting affordable housing. And they're petitioning to end affordable housing so that they, because it's an undue obligation upon them. And now I'll get a little political. That's why it's important who you pick as mayor, as governor. The Republican candidate for governor has pledged to end the Mount Laurel decision and have it reversed. So if you're vying for affordable housing, you will consider that.
Mr. Mayor, can I just say something?
You haven't said anything yet.
I have not, so, because I just want people to know I'm here. And there's one group that I'd like, that I think we also should recognize that doesn't really get a lot of credit, and that's the legislature. And now, and I'm serious. It took 15 years to get round three done. 15 years. That's why we had a gap period, right? So the third round, instead of being 10 years, was 25 years. And the reason for that is because Mount Laurel litigation had gotten completely out of control. The Christie administration had completely gutted COA. It became a completely broken process. The legislature adopted A4. It came up with a new model, right? And this model had been, Vince called it the program, because we don't know what else to call it. It's, the legislature called it. But the point of it was to end the endless cycle of litigation. And while we were sitting here tonight, I pulled up, because I remembered from all the times I've read it, Mount Laurel II. And everybody should read the first three pages of that decision. And it was Chief Justice Willance railing against the fact that 10 years before they had decided Mount Laurel won, and there was nothing but endless litigation, and that there had to be a way to end it. And that's what forced the first adoption of the Fair Housing Act, which had established COA, which once again was, you know, then decimated by Governor Christie. But the legislature, I mean, what has happened now is something like 400 municipalities have become compliant with their Mount Laurel obligation. And the next round does not start until next Tuesday. Think about that. Instead of 25, instead of 15 years, it's done on time, never been done before. Pretty amazing. And like I said, the legislature doesn't always get credit. And, you know, but sometimes we have to give credit where credit is due. They gave us a tool. It, by the way, put the municipalities in the driver's seat, absolutely put us in the driver's seat. And we were able to get this done in towns like Franklin, who, you know, who always, Franklin had substantive certification before the, in the third round, before the Supreme Court threw out the third round. And then we went back and got it again. That, I mean, that's how far ahead Franklin is. So I just, I, sometimes, you know, once again, we need the tools, and I always, as everybody knows, I have a little bit of a connection to the legislature. I always tell them, all towns need is a little help, right? Just give us the tools. Want to do the right thing. So, Mark, pretty good.
All right. Any other comments on any other items on the consent agenda? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Emerson.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Onichaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Petosnick.
Yes.
Deputy Mary Dean.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
We have no items to be voted on separately. Old business, any boards, committees, commission vacancies, nominations? I would do the last nomination for the Franklin 250, the Randy Jones. Any other nominations for that position?
That's the last one?
Do it by, that's the last one for now, because there's no real rules.
There's going to be 250 people on the 250 committee.
That's where the 250 is for.
25.
Then we can do it by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Congratulations, Mr. Jones. We have no executive session. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Be well, Franklin.